Good evening, everyone. Stand for the pledge. Craig, can you move this?
Sure. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. It's wonderful they have no masks. Welcome, everyone. This is a special meeting that we've scheduled. It's, of course, they're all open to the public. And the purpose is to meet with our friends from SEI and campus who has gone back to the drawing board and may have something for us to consider within the amount of money we have to spend. So why don't I turn it over to the superintendent and we'll turn it over to our guests.
Absolutely. So we have been in multiple meetings for the last two weeks, really discussing how to repackage the capital improvement project and still meet our community's needs. And I'm optimistic and excited to show you what the plan is moving forward. I think that the value engineering ideas, as I said in my email today, really still capture what the building planning task force wants, but in a scaled back version. So with that, I will turn it over to Gary. And Gary, do you want to introduce yourself to your team and why you're here tonight?
Good evening.
Thank you.
Appreciate the opportunity to come back to this evening. So with me, I'm Gary Hoffman. So with me, I brought our president of campus, Marcus Pizzito, Jason Hannan, who's our director of estimating, and Charlie Connor, our project manager, and Ted Mountain from SEI, who's here as well tonight, joining us. So a couple of things we're trying to accomplish is, you have a report that we prepared that's a lot of information. The objective to see thing is not to go page by page through that report, but we've done a PowerPoint that has extracted information from that report. So it's the same information that's in there, but in a later version. So we want, this is just casual reading material for you later in your spare time. But what we want to do is spend a few minutes tonight and walk through ideas, requests, concepts, thoughts. There's been a lot of groundhog in the last, well, even since the day of the bid, but in the last two weeks, there's been a lot accomplished, I think. And to be able to come to tonight with some ideas and ask for your consideration. We're going to start.
I do.
May I have a bright problem?
Yep.
We're going to start by revisiting the original authorization of 15 million, 550,000. We're going to explain the available funds for construction. That is what we have available to award for bids. The incentive budget is a fixed number. It's the same number you have seen right along. And just a brief explanation of the incentive budget, it's the soft costs. It's the CM fees, the architect fees, the testing fees for the third-party testing for when we have to have testing companies come in and test the compaction of the soils and test the concrete and make sure it meets the specs.
And Gary, this would be your fees also?
Yes. So yes, that is included. The professional fees.
Okay.
Engineering and architecture and CM. And then the project contingency, which approximates 7%. So we look at what we have available to work with, and that's at 12.12 million, 196. We take about 70% up, approximately 7% of that for contingency. Four unknown, when you get into construction, you open up a wall and you find an asbestos-covered pipe where you dig into the ground and you find boulders or whatever. So it's there to be used and reserved. The objective is not to use it. The objective is that it goes back to the district, but we have to add that. It's our recommendation we have to add that because we never know when you start uncovering things, what you need. Are there any questions? Okay. The other thing I want to say that we're open to a conversation tonight, we're open to questions. If you want, if there's something you say or something you see, feel free to ask. This is also going to be a dynamic conversation, so I'm going to be looking to my group as well to help jump in and explaining. Has everybody brings something new? Has somebody, everybody brings, sorry, everybody brings an experience to the table. And combined, we have a lot of experience and we're going to contribute that tonight to this presentation. This is also a slide you have seen earlier. These are, these are the actual numbers. These were the numbers that we seen on bid day. We recognize at this point, you don't have confidence in our ability to estimate, and I get that, and I really respect, and I respect that, and we do, we really respect that. So we're working with bid numbers, what realized numbers that we received on bid day. So this is, this is a recognition of what our original conceptual budget was and what it really came in at and how we got into trouble. And you've seen this and how much we were over on that day. The management team that being campus and SEI have spent an enormous amount of time in the last several weeks on really diving deep into this and trying to take a whole lot of information and bring it to you and explain it. What we've done is had countless conversations with contractors who've really jumped into them and tried to understand even better, not only for BE items, but how we got here and what our path forward is. Because they have a lot of good information and they're living, they're living the contracting world. And so we met daily internally with SEI, with the district. We de-scoped, we had de-scoping meetings with the bidders, as I explained, to better understand their perspective of the bid and what we could do. Because we've recognized the district has priorities. This project was intended to deliver a project to the community. And our goal is to try and accomplish as much as physically possible in the climate we're in, with the dollars we had to work with. And we, to accomplish that, we're looking at the project bid values, we're looking at value engineering items, we're going to talk about those tonight. As I said, we really spent a lot of time talking with the contractors. And we heard the board's concerns about the field. And shortly after that, brought a mini excavator in and Charlie can talk to it, he was here that day. We punched holes in that field, we went looking. We wanted to see if there was anything that would, that would be of concern. Do you want to take a second to talk about that?
Sure. Go to the next picture. We met with the civil engineer, Marathon, who's Oh, there you go. So we met with a civil engineer and they recommended that we start with four locations. It was approximately the 30-yard line, give or take, at the field on both sides, about out where the hash marks would be, to try and get a representation of what the field would represent if we were to move forward. When we dug these holes, the areas closest to the bleachers, they really looked fantastic. And obviously, as you get away from the bleachers, the level of fill increases. We dug down about seven feet and there was nothing that was overly concerning based on what we saw. We had a civil engineer on site, we had a geotechnical engineer on site who did the full geotechnical report prior to any of this construction. So there were a few chunks of asphalt, there were a few pieces of brick. So there was a little bit of, you know, what I would consider hard fill. There was also a bunch of shot rock from a previous project that was used, which is fantastic material when you're doing that kind of a massive fill. But there really wasn't anything that was overly concerning based on what we saw in those locations. So we are expecting a report from the geotechnical engineer that was on site, but we're pretty confident with what we discovered.
But just to review, you did this, or something similar, the way that went, right before we went to bid?
Yes, correct. Correct. Just not in the field.
We did a sample off the field, right off the field, to not impact the field itself. And Marathon, our site engineer, had done previous projects on the field, so they were comfortable with what they had just off the field. Now with additional concerns, you guys, just to make sure we're all sort of checking the, you know, dotting the i's and crossing the t's. We did these additional samples and it turned out to be pretty much what we expected, which is good.
And I mean, that was to address some of the concerns that came from your last board meeting, but also, this is the number, this is protecting our $833,000 construction contingency number right now that's built into that. Because if we did find unsuitable soils down to that degree, we would start eating up that money to be put underground. Where obviously, we're trying to utilize as much money to pay the bills to the capacity that we want through the building project. And we don't want to put money underground.
We just attached a couple of pictures. We have a pretty extensive photo album that we took to document everything.
Understand that it's not, we didn't dig up the entire field. It's just not practical, but we did do a genuine attempt at trying to see if there's something there or if the suitable is not suitable.
Do we anticipate going down further than seven feet out? As deep as you think we're going to go?
Yep.
So the cuts are only going to be a couple of feet.
Correct. Yeah, there's only about two or three feet of cut. They're only going to take about two, two and one, three feet off. We went down seven. So they could, we had, so So the site work contract that we're actually going to recommend for award, and we're going to explain why, is it at 2.36 million? I believe we may have spoken last time, we talked about KPN, Keystone Purchasing Network. Governor Cuomo, five, six years ago, worked with legislature, passed the legislation. The nickname is piggybacking. So it allows schools to find contracts that have already been bid. And for instance, it could be Livingston County, it could be Monroe County, it could be a county in California. But, or, or there are networks now too. So it's allowed as private entities have gone out and solicited bids and generated scopes of work and had contractors bid it. And those are called networks. And your members, this district is a member of several of those networks, one of them being KPN, Keystone Purchasing Network. So the field that was the basis of design that LG Evans included in their bid is made by FieldTurf. FieldTurf is through Shenango Sports, a member of KPN. So we really spent a lot of time seeing if we could get a better value for the district using that KPN network. We've used it in past projects on other districts and wanted to see if that was an opportunity for us. One of the things that networks do for you is allow you to pick a contractor. And sometimes, when you open bids, old bid may not be the one you want. They may not be a great contractor. These networks, these purchasing agreements allow you to actually pick a contractor who, if they have to be a part of that, but if they are, you can get to that contractor without doing a public bid. Completely legal, New York State now recognizes it, they're the ones who passed it, they thought it was a better tool for schools.
Amen.
So we went after that hard and fast, seeing if we could get a better value using that KPN than we could get from Evans. What we found is we couldn't. We really twisted KPN's ears to get their number down, and they would only go so far. But it wasn't far enough. We believe, in our opinion, that when LG Evans' base bid value of 1.672 million, that is a better value. You're still getting the same field and you're saving quite a bit of money than if we went through KPN. KPN is not always the least expensive, but as I say, what it allows you to do is use a good contractor. They were going to use DeFiore, who was one of the bidders, who was an excellent contractor, has done a bunch of fields, knows the business, but in the end, Shenango Sports and FieldTurf just wouldn't come down far enough for us. And so hearing this, they both are carrying the exact same turf field.
That's correct.
Same turf fields carried in LG Evans' base bid and in that KPN network. So it was pricing the exact same field. And the difference in the number also from the base bid is also the other parking lot. So what you're seeing there is the cost for the turf field, and then you're also the difference of almost $700,000 is the parking lot that's backed by the field also. So that's really what makes up that LG Evans contract.
So the turf field?
Go ahead.
Sorry. It's the turf field and then the parking lot that gets from the 1.6 to the 2.3?
Yes.
You, Mark, you 90% answered my question. So that number represents the turf field, the work on the back parking lot, but does it also include the prep that you needed when we blow out that back wall? Do you need, is that part of that?
No. So the earthwork necessary for the gym addition is built into the general trades contract.
Okay, that's not, it's not there?
Nope.
Okay.
So there, this is basically from our sidewalks out is really what the LG Evans put their bid to, and that's what we would be proceeding with.
Okay. It's one reason we're able to isolate this contract specifically and talk about recommending the award, because it has nothing to do with the building portion of the project at all.
Okay.
In a way, it was serendipitous, the way we created the contract such that we could actually have this conversation and be in a position to award LG Evans the site contract without affecting the rest of the project because it had nothing to do with the rest of the project. It's standalone.
So the site contract includes the turf field?
Yes.
And the back parking lot?
Yes, but not the addition.
Got you.
And the exercise we're trying to do, like Gary talked about, to get the cooperative purchase agreements, just to show you guys, our bid number that we received, which we received seven of them, and they are all worth in a tight values in themselves, is the best value that we physically can get out on the street by going out and bidding with it. And that was, again, to Gary's point about our estimates and your confidence in them, we wanted to go out and show you going out there purchasing in different ways. We're still getting the best number we possibly can right now by the bid that we went out. It's just the current market that we're at today for this.
These are good questions. Any other questions?
So we could conceivably accept that bid and, I mean, we could conceivably stop there. And I'm not sure that we want to do that, but
Yeah, no, I get it.
But that's different than the gym and the auditorium. That's all by itself.
Okay. We would have a different conversation about that parking lot then, because there would be, and we're about to give you some value engineering items, because that parking lot, we're raising that parking lot for a future grade to come into the building. We could save some additional money by not raising that back parking lot of that $700,000 number, leave the grade where it is and just redo the parking lot. There'd be that opportunity also, if you were to just say, we're stopping at the site contract.
Okay.
I'm just going to throw one little curve at that, only that in order to open up the aid, you have to do a minimum of $10,000 in the building. If you're, if you were to only award the site contract, to follow the rules that the state says we have to follow, you have to open up construction in the building and the minimum is 10 grand. So you can replace a couple doors for 10 grand and you're fine.
Okay.
You know, it's that simple.
Sure.
Yes?
Based on this value for the turf field, when you look at the original 15.5 million, is the percentage that we're allocating towards the field roughly the same as what it was in that initial? Or are we going higher with this?
We are going higher with this number overall.
So we're going higher with this and that's going to impact the other?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
That includes any structures, bleachers?
This includes all of the site package in full.
How much higher is it, do we know?
I'm sorry?
Do we know how much higher it is from the original? It's on that first page.
It's on that first page. What the bid came in at.
Yeah. The conceptual budget was 1.8 million and it came in at 2.3. It's on page one of six of section two.
Are you reusing the same bleachers or maybe new bleachers? What is the plan for that?
They're being reused.
They're being reused.
And it has always been the plan.
That's always been, it hasn't been used. So nothing changes? So by awarding that site contract, field still gets the crown, it still gets the turf, it still gets the improvements at the parking areas, all that. Nothing really changes on that, in that regard. Other than what we're going to present to you for BE, for BE items. So, and let me just explain a little bit too, is if we go forward and we award the site contract, we will recommend award for the 2.36 million, but we've negotiated BE items. The time to negotiate BE with the contractor is before you sign the contract, not after. So we, and we've locked in those numbers with them and got their assurance. So the idea of jumping ahead a little bit, but if we award this contract, we would then, right after award, if we get a contract, we'd turn around and write deduct change orders to capture the BE items if you agree, if the board agrees to those, or any one of those. Then it becomes a deduct change order to the contract, and the contract drops.
So at normal speed, what that means is you would take the savings that they have now guaranteed from LG Evans and use it in other parts of the project?
Yes. That frees up dollars.
Thank you.
It's just, it's just, it, you know, I mean, because at numerous meetings, I understand this, but it doesn't, it's not always as simple and clear.
Yeah, I, we do it, so we take it for granted, sorry. So, ref, that's a good explanation. It frees up dollars to use for the gym, fine arts, whatever, whatever we decide to use those dollars towards.
So let's go from Gary's speak where, and actually talk about those dollars and cents of the value engineering. So our goal with the site contract and its award and then identifying value engineering was really the base bid of that site contract, and then the goal was to maintain the project schedule as it was originally within the project to be completed by this fall, but to also reduce costs. So we worked with the civil engineer as well as the site, the low bid site contractor, LG Evans, to identify multiple value engineering opportunities as the design had currently, as it, as the project is currently designed. We came through with a list of, I think, 10 or 12 opportunities. We reviewed them with the civil engineer, who said, we don't recommend some of these just based upon what we know of the current field and its makeup, or just code and accessibility items, things of that nature. And we've identified these six items that address about $258,000 in savings that would be reduced from LG Evans' base bid contract.
Take a breath, so you got, so in the report is everything that LG Evans presented through our conversation, so that, and we, you'll see, so it's full disclosure, you'll see everything we talked about, and we'll narrow it down to what you see here.
Yes. So you'll, LG Evans provided a breakdown of each specific item. It's also highlighted red whether, what, whether the civil engineer recommended moving forward with that value engineering item or not. So we had six items and I can explain them relatively easily. Within your field, on our storm structures, there is catch basins below the field. The, so the civil engineer identified those for any future use of possible cleaning out of the piping, but it's not a necessary feature. It's not done and typically done in fields. So LG Evans provided a value to reduce their contract by $12,000 for that item.
So I'm just going to jump in on a second. So we've done, we have had the privilege to do a full load of turf fields, and this was the first time we ever saw in a design the catch basins. We talked to the site contractors, not just one, but we talked to four of them, plus vetted this out with FieldTurf as well. It's not something that's typical as if a catch basins under a field that you're never going to see. So it, you're not getting, it's limited on, you're never going to get foreign material in there because you've got, you've got a carpet over it, the turf. And years from now, people will even forget they're even there because you're not going to see them. So we didn't see that they were functional.
Next item is the change of the actual stone section underneath the turf. Currently, or within the bid, we had a larger stone section, and that was to ensure that if we did find any bad fill, as, you know, has been discussed previously and Charlie brought up from our borings and test pits, that we would be able to bridge it with that larger stone section. Now that we've identified what's actually underneath that grass, Marathon was able to identify a smaller stone section that will still drain, still provide the same stability underneath that field as was originally designed, but it's allowing us to provide a value back to the district under LG Evans' contract of $54,700.
What was the original depth of the stone section?
Five and eight, right?
Yeah, it was 13 inches of stone.
With a layer of merify, with a layer of eight-inch stone, with another layer of merify, and then the fine, and then the stone dust on top that the carpet goes on.
And you're reducing it down to nine inch?
From nine. So that the thought, the original thought was that basis of design, I believe, was concern for if there was something down there, if there was stone, if there was the shot rock or foreign material to bridge that. The engineer explained to us that they put that five merify, eight merify was to bridge anything bad that may have been down there. But Typically, with that detail, it's a six-inch actually lift of stone that's installed on that on a typical field. In discussions with Marathon, it was more of feeling comfortable with the field designed in nine inches. Based largely on doing those excavations that we did several weeks ago up there.
So how would you break down now the nine inch and merify? So what's this pattern now?
So it's the, it's, it's your drainage, then you have eight inches of clean stone with one inches of, one inch of fines, and then your turf, which is a very typical detail. It's just, it's how much stone, is whether it's six inches, such as Mark said, or eight or what have you, but it's, that's a very typical detail. The way it was previously is because they were trying to ensure the stability of the field on top of unknown aspects underneath the ground. But now, you know, now that we have a good feeling and understanding as to what's in there, they were able to reduce that down.
Kevin, also in that second, the last page of the report itself has the cross-section for the revision of this, they will get priced, it actually was reviewed by LG Evans that provided this pricing already.
And by FieldTurf too?
Yes.
So FieldTurf is bought into this as well?
They agree also, they warranty on the field. So I'll send them.
Yes. Good point. That's a really good point.
Do you have your second, is, do you have your warranty?
Yes. FieldTurf would head, would it carry the 12?
Your warranty?
The nine-inch layer is with FieldTurf's approval.
Yes. I believe it comes with 12, and, but the state aids, well, aided for 15. They're aided based on 15 years. So if you replace it in 12, they will prolong the last three years, you don't get the full aid on it.
The next item is, and Gary, if you go to the next slide, because it's, it's a good visual, is the concrete stairs leading from your parking lot down to the actual bleacher section. So
Those three black dots up there.
So as Mark had identified, we will be lifting that parking lot up. Those stairs, where that parking lot is and down where that field is, is a roughly 15-foot drop. But those stairs are rather expensive. So the question is, how are you, will you be utilizing those stairs to access those bleachers? And in conjunction with needing to do the stairs, we have to relocate a 48-inch storm drain, or storm line to install those stairs as well. So in conjunction, with all those parts and pieces, LG Evans was able to provide us a credit on their contract of $122,000 to not proceed with that. And in having discussions with the design team as well as the administration earlier today, it's, it's not as though you could never do those stairs in the future if they become a necessary item. You could do them in a different manner, you could do a switchback path down that, you could utilize aluminum stairs such as you have now in lieu of poured-in-place concrete stairs with landings every so feet. So we were, we thought that was a good one to bring forward as it's a, it's a rather large dollar value. Next item is in, is utilizing onsite material for fill within that parking lot. So you have an old tennis court section as well, when we did the borrow pits for the field, we also went over to that old tennis court and identified, is there good material here that could be utilized within that parking lot? Based upon what we saw, it is good material. It is very dependent upon how wet it is at installation and making sure that you're getting the proof roll lifts when you're putting it underneath, or to be utilized underneath the parking lot. However, LG Evans, based upon the, that the amount of fill that they could get out of that and utilize within the parking lot, provide a credit of $24,000. Now, we would ask that, we would proceed with that more on a unit basis because it's not, we want to make sure that whatever's going in there is good fill. So if it is weather dependent, it is wet that day, then they'll need to bring in other fill. And it would more or less be per unit, per cubic yard credit that we would look to at time of installation.
So by taking the material out of that old tennis court, there won't be a hole when we're done because to do that field is about a 3,000-yard cut with a 2,000-yard putback. So we have 1,000 yards we've got to find a home for. So if we borrow from there, we dig a hole and get the gravel out of there, now we have a hole. We take the 1,000 yards that's over here and we can move it over there and grade it, grass it, cover it, and call it a day. So it really works out well to not have to pay the truck 1,000 yards off site and use that material that's out there right now. It's like having our own little mine over there.
So next item is installing a three-inch dense binder instead of what we would utilize, what was currently in the contract bids, which was a two-and-a-half-inch binder section? This is for pavement of the parking lot, sorry. So this is So, this is at the parking lot, this is the pavement section. So, within the contract documents, it's two and a half inches of binder, one and a half inches of top. The civil engineer looked at it and said, "To get the same stability, you could utilize three inches of dense binder, which is just a different type of asphalt, and it would provide the same level as the parking, as it was originally designed, and be just as secure to utilize, and that would net you a $31,000 credit."
So, you can always come back later and pave it. You can put topping out with that binder. If, if, we always do binder anyways, then you top it at the finish. But in this case, we wouldn't, we'd skip that top course, and that could always be done, as I say, at another time. So, it doesn't preclude you from doing that.
And then last item is eliminating granite curbs. Currently, all the, the entire curving sections within the entire project are granite. So, this would be to eliminate those curves, go to a concrete curb at, at areas where we do need them, as well as some, we had, we did have some granite circles within the parking lot just as area ways to get cars in and out of those parking spaces. And that, we could eliminate those as well, fully eliminated, and just, they would be striped in lieu of, in lieu of granite.
Granite is, is a premium. It's an upgrade from concrete. Concrete work is, people use concrete every day of the week. Granite, well, if you hit it with a pot, it won't chip, it'll break the block, whereas the concrete might chip. You know, but it, it has longevity to it. It's not quite what granite is, but it has longevity.
I've had some bad experience with our granite curbs in another area of the, the plant here. So, losing those, I wouldn't be disappointed about.
Okay, okay.
And that'll net you about $15,000.
Got it.
So, all those, like I said, add up to $258,700 as value engineering items and credits back from LG Evans' base bid contract.
So, as I mentioned earlier, if we go ahead with awarding the contract, we would award it for that two, three, six, and, and if the six, the E items are acceptable to the board, then we turn around and take the deduct to the contract for that change, or after a time extension to do. And then those three dollars, those dollars freed up go to other things.
Those are supposed to be set at those amounts, so we award the 2.3, and then that's set at 2.58?
Yes.
The only item that wouldn't be, would be that one, that borrow pit site where it was gonna be, we would take that as a, a unit cost. So, however much we utilize from your site would be what the credit we would get back would be. So, if it's, so that would be, it wouldn't be one of those immediate change reductions that we would see right after award. It would be, we had, we need to see how the project works out within the weather of the summer and things of that nature to really ascertain what the value of that credit would be.
So, and one thing we didn't mention already is that in conversations with LG Evans, they're still committed to finish, we, we'd like to try and start around April 1st, and then they still are saying they can be done in time for September 1st. So, it doesn't change the, the schedule at all. Any more on that?
Unless there are, unless there are questions in regards to the overall site that you might have, that you...
So, the green identifies what the, what you're buying for, for, for the state, under the state, under the site contract. So, we spent a lot of time talking about the site. Pantry were buckets, and one bucket was the site, another bucket is the gymnasium and the steam addition, and recognizing that that is a very important aspect of this project to the district. When we go back and look on that fateful day of bids, we see the current addition bid costs were $8,417,000. Our goal was to maintain the design intent of that space, but also the aid ability, which is a really, really important piece to recognize, because you're getting one-time aid on this by, by doing the steam. If we do the steam, you're getting one-time aid that probably will not be there ever again. So, if we can do the gym, can do the steam, we get the aid, it helps you as a district big time. So, if, we recognize that, and we're trying to capture that and, and achieve that for you. Value engineering proposals, we have a, we're really shooting for more. We're, we really tried like heck to get more. At the end of the day, this is where we landed, with all the pushing and pulling, and massaging, and moving, and talking.
Are you gonna go through this one too?
Okay, so, I'll let him talk. But this is the E for the gym addition and the athletic entrance, catching the steam and the gym, all of that area.
So, these value engineering items become a little bit more, you're gonna wanna review that report because it lists out each of these items a little bit more in detail, what they are, and, and what they consist of. But number one is, we took a look at the exterior of the building. So, we broke things down into interior and exterior of the building. So, the exterior of the building, current, the, the original design had the usage of a metal panel as a back wall that provides your thermal break from outside to inside. But it also had on top of it, like you would see, a masonry veneer, but it had, they, we were utilizing these phenolic panels, as well as on other sections, we were utilizing reinforced concrete panels. So, the thought, working with SEI, we said, "Well, why don't we just utilize the insulated metal panel and make that a more architectural insulated metal panel?" So, instead of having two systems, one for aesthetics and one for your thermal break, it's one system that provides both aesthetic and your thermal, your thermal break.
So, an example of this is, we drive down across from Walmart, I'm sorry, across from Weyman's, there's the brand new RGH building, Medical Center, it was just built. That's what we're proposing, is that architectural insulated metal panel, that, that Luca bond. If you look at that gray panel that's around that building, that's what you would get. So, it's a good, it's a good real-life example of what we have nearby. Time-tested proven system.
And I know Ted has brought some samples of metal spans, metal panels for you guys, for you to, to look at at any time that you wish. So, that nets us about a $90,000, $90,000 decrease, just to change that, that one veneer product to another. It really doesn't, I think, we'll show you one of the renderings that SEI has provided. It doesn't, you don't, you won't necessarily notice it, ever. You'll never know that there was something different that was supposed to be there before when the end product comes out. We also looked at the window area, the glazing around the entire gymnasium. There is, there was south-facing, there was west-facing, there was north-facing windows. So, we looked at what would we do to reduce, to reduce costs within there. So, we've reduced the windows by a little bit larger than 50%, and you, you can't see those on SEI's rendering as well, which has netted us another $90,000.
So, every one of these is a, is a follow-up to conversations with the contractors. Where was the money? Where, where was this thing coming off the rails? So, every one of these is something that precipitates from those conversations and trying to find another way of doing it.
Item three is, at the end of coming towards bidding, we added a canopy outside of the new entrance to that lower-level gym area and stairs on the north side of the building. We added, we added a canopy there, so this would be to eliminate that canopy. Our idea is if we do go out, back out to bid, we would put that as an alternate to see what the value of that is, and identify whether that is important to the district to keep that canopy, or not pursue it in the end. About $75,000 reduction out of the gym space with that one. Number four, this is reducing the storage room within the gym, and Gary, if you could flip a few pages here, it really tells a tale. So, go one more to Gary. So, we have this angled wall here at the bottom of the gym, that's a storage room, coach's office. That wall extends the full height of the gym, it's thirty feet. That's all masonry at this, throughout the, or part of the design here. So, our value engineering idea was, what if we modified that wall to be ten feet tall? Still provide you a storage space, but we don't have masons up on scaffolding within the gym, putting, putting in time and effort to provide you just a wall to the roof. That netted you, go back please. That would net about $30,000 just to, and it's, it's one of those things where it wasn't there before, so it's a small modification. We would use cold form metal framing for the lid of those walls, so, and...
Like-aged steel studs.
Yep, so that it still has rigidity on top if, in the future, you ever wanted to do anything with that space. So, our next item is somewhat inclusive, or somewhat incorporated with the window area is, we worked with the structural engineer and SEI to identify, what can we do to this building without changing almost anything but reduce costs? And that is utilizing additional structural X-bracing between the columns, something that we only had in certain locations of the space. By adding additional X-bracing, and it works in conjunction kind of with our, which reduced window area because we didn't have it in those spaces because we had windows there. Who wants X-bracing in front of your windows? So, by do, reducing the window area and including more additional X-bracing, we, we drastically reduce the weight of the steel that we need to use, and as well as the connections of this steel, onsite welding that would have been necessary to, to have the current design, to go to something that has, like I said, that additional bracing, we, we can net $160,000, and it's one of those things where no one would ever see it. It's, it's not really gonna be a known factor. Whether you saw it in, in the current design or the new design, it's just additional X-bracing.
Place isn't gonna collapse, is it?
No, it's, it's the same, and the structural analysis is actually in, in the back of that.
Ted's good with this?
Yeah, we're good with it.
Okay.
It's a good trade-off. They're okay with the, the reduced window area.
So, eliminate display cases and benches at the gym entrance. Gary, if you could, go down a few more slides again, please. So, right below that storage room, we are, as part of building this gym, we have to cut into the structure of the existing space, which, to install our two-hour rated wall within the gym. This leaves these cavities, thank you, Ted? These cavities are where existing structure is, where it meets new. So, the design team identified those spaces for display cases, some benches to sit on. So, we're, in our thinking, whether we could eliminate those, we could bid them as alternates, or at the end of the day, you could put whatever you want in there at a later date. It's, there, there's nothing specific about those spaces that says it needs to be a display case, or it needs to be a bench. So, it's, it's coming along these lines where we don't want to drastically modify the design, but allows you to make improvements, whether they be through the project at a later date or, or on your own, you know, in future projects. Okay. So, that nets us about $18,000 to, to eliminate those from the current design. Removing motorized window shades. We would be reducing some of these window shades anyway because of the reduction to windows, if that was a selected value engineering item. But here, we spoke with the contractors, they said it was about $80,000 for all the motorized window shades for all the windows within that space. By reducing our window area and also utilize translucent window glazing, we really feel that it wouldn't be a necessary item at this juncture to proceed with. And if you did in the future find that there was a large glare, let's say, at a four o'clock western sun, you know, and you're playing a basketball game, well, that's, again, an item that can always be added. It's not something necessary for the gym space to function currently and be bid.
They could also do manual shades.
Manual shades, exactly. For sure. So, that nets us about $80,000 there.
How high up are they?
Aren't they high, though, and they can be manual?
Yeah, we, we've done this in different, in different gymnasiums as well as, as well as pools, where it's, glare is obviously a really big issue in pools, right? So, they're just long chains, and you just, you're able to manipulate them down on ground floor, but they do extend all the way up. So, the next one is really simplifying the paint scheme of the bar joists. The current design within the gym, we have these long, we have these deep bar joists that hold up the roof. We had alternating color sequences on the bar joists, which is a great aesthetic. However, it is a lot of prep work and to, for the painting contractor to get up there with the lift and make sure they're only painting that section of the bar joist, and then, you know, going and doing the roof deck, and then the next bar joist. So, to, to kind of limit those, limit that complexity and time, we identified $10,000 to just go to a uniform, one, one color for the roof deck and for the bar joist. Number nine, lower-level gypsum wall framing. Gary, can you go two slides, please? So, this is the lower level. Currently, the design identifies this corridor between the exercise room and the STEM spaces as all masonry walls. To change those out, we would go with a metal stud and gypsum wall board in lieu of doing masonry. You know, we could still provide the same fire rating with gypsum wall board, and it would also, and it would provide substantial savings by not doing all that masonry work to the tune of $30,000. Next item is actually, on that same floor line, is the toilet rooms. We would maintain and leave masonry in the exterior toilet rooms, right there to the, adjacent to the middle school steam room. However, we currently have wall tile to be installed there up to six foot eight, and then painted above that. So, this value engineering item would be to just do all painted masonry and utilize paint schemes to make it an aesthetic such as the tile would have been. And this is another item where you can always go back and install tile at a later date, or you can bid it as an alternate, but removing it from the base contract could net us some value.
One of the major concerns as we go through all of these was also recognizing not to undo something, not to go build something, and then if you decide to do an enhancement, that you're not tearing off what you did. So, all of these recognize that. So, we were very sensitive to that as well.
Okay. Next item is changing the interior railings. Currently, all the railings within the entire project are to be identified as stainless steel. So, we, when speaking with one of the general trades contractors, it was identified, if you could just change the interior railings to a powder-coated or painted railing in lieu of stainless steel, you could have some considerable savings. Now, because we're only speaking about the gym addition here, we only have one stairwell, or one staircase identified, so the savings on this is about $10,000. However, you know, if you extrapolate that and you wanted to proceed with it at the auditorium, there's two sections of stairwells, there's, you know, more railings within that space, so we, there would be an additional value engineering component at that space as well. And then, number 12, this kind of goes in conjunction with that masonry wall at the storage room. On that masonry wall that was to be installed was a large vinyl graphic of Geneseo. That vinyl graphic was about $25,000. So, at this juncture, we're saying, you know, eliminate the vinyl graphic. Again, something that you could put on the next, the, the back wall now that's above that lid, storage room, and it could be at a later date if you feel as though it's a necessary aesthetic component that you want to add to your gym. So, those are all the interior pieces and value engineering items. I know I talked a lot because my voice is starting to go. Any questions on some of those specific items?
No.
Back, back to the canopy. Can you show me where the canopy is, please?
So, this box right here is the canopy. So, these are the stairs that would lead you into the ground floor, or this is the somewhat vestibule that leads you into the ground floor. These stairs go up to the gym level on the first floor, and this is, this being the ground floor. So, this is actually, I believe, how you would access the main gym, ground floor, would be through here. So, this is the canopy that was right there, it was added at a, at a, at a late stage, and we think, you know, if we could just do that as an alternate, identify whether it's something you want to proceed with based upon that value.
Where is it on this?
So, it's on the backside, it's actually not within the record.
Oh, okay, I was, I didn't know he meant this whole thing.
Yeah, that big canopy is still, it's not a good one.
We would try to get that as a value engineering item. Ted slapped our hand very good because SD requires the stairs to be maintained at all times. That'd be a very difficult task without that canopy. There'd be a lot of shoveling, insulting on those stairs, and we'd probably be very fast.
And this is actually a great, great bit. Keep it here for a second? Because the next two value engineering items are actually... Keep it here for a second because the next two value engineering items are actually depicted on this drawing. We have concrete retaining walls on this wall of the plaza as well as this small stub wall right here. Are all retaining walls that based upon the grades that are outside those walls, we could easily, we believe we could grade up to the plaza area from there and eliminate those retaining walls without really having any necessary impact on anything. It would just be adding, you know, additional fill to make sure that we're meeting the grade of the concrete floor there. And then the last one, if you could go down one Gary, sorry. Is Ted's already kind of done it here, but that used to be, I believe, a backlit, a backlit sign on the retaining wall here with a big G. So that would, that's something that we identified a value engineer not to do a backlit sign at that space. However, again, that's something that's on the outside of the building. The electrical component to be built into that wall is still there. You could do it at a later date if you wanted to add it. And that is a, those like the graphics and the sign, the backlit signs are all things that can be procured such as Gary talked about on state contract or cooperative purchase at a later date without going back out to bid. We can always bring in those signed contractors to come in and provide bids without the need to go back out to bid.
So just a quick, sorry.
No, it's good.
Just a quick rundown of what Jason's been talking about and I think the packet's a little bit better quality than on the screen. So I wanted to quickly show you this. Basically what you have here is your page one is the new concept for entering. Which I think the team here with this, you know, campus and SEI, we're trying to hit a sweet spot here. We don't want to sort of, you know, save as much money on this gym as possible and doesn't look good still. So we're trying to again, hit a good medium ground. So the first page that you see there represents the change from the cementitious exterior panel to the metal panel and the window reduction. So those are the two things you're going to see as the major changes. The windows have been reduced and of course, that has to be replaced with wall. And then the wall has been changed and you'll see a little bit larger panel, which we recognized in talking to the contractors would be labor savings. By utilizing a larger panel, you reduce the labor. So you see those lines that create the wall are a little bit larger than any other diagram. The second page is just another color scheme, so that's something we can figure out later. It's essentially the same as the first page. And I wanted to include the third page is what the original design was. So you can see where we were on the original in terms of the panel lines and also the amount of windows. So we concentrated on the design and doing to realize that 50% reduction of the glass was, if you compare one and three, is basically we got rid of the glass on the north and south walls. Which you don't see the north wall in here, but you see the south wall which is near the large staircase. And then we reduced some of the glass on the west elevation. But we tried to leave some of the original design in there with the corner window and the high glass up at the top. So those are the differences that you see. So I just wanted to show you that really quickly as part of this discussion continues going forward with the gym addition ideas. And one thing we didn't do yet is, as Jason mentioned, if we can realize some savings on the retaining wall you'll see here. Basically this section towards the back would be eliminated and we would grade in the grass up to the patio concrete beyond. We'd still have a wall out here because of the height difference. But as we get closer to the building, we can eliminate this portion and just blend in the grade basically to the patio. So that saves some money on retaining wall.
So those are the value engineering items that the entire team has kind of developed. We had some other out of the box ideas, but really they would really modify what your gym was looking like and also maybe the intent of the space. We had thoughts of reducing the actual square footage, which would limit runouts on the gymnasium, on the basketball court and things of that nature. But it wasn't realizing enough savings to say you should be proceeding with this or this is a recommended path to take. Obviously, we can still look at any, any other ideas that anyone would have in terms of cost. But right now, we've kind of landed on these 14 items that net us about $668,000 in savings to the gymnasium addition.
So where this brings us is that we've talked about the site piece and what that value is. Now we're looking, we've now looked at the gymnasium and the steam addition and what that value potentially exists at. So where this brings us into the conversation at this point is if the site is awarded and the direction of the district is to go ahead and bid the gymnasium and steam addition. There's still a whole part of the project that hasn't, will not have been bid yet, which represent real dollars to the district. And one thought, there's, so the thought is that if we capture the site contract, we bid the gym and steam addition. We're going to then have real numbers. We're going to know where we are budget wise. We know what we're starting at, at that $12 million 986. Now we're going to subtract out the site, what we're going to net on the site value. We'd net out what we know is going to after bid, what the gym and the steam addition looks like value wise. We have dollars left, what can we do with those dollars? And those dollars then become the next conversation piece about the fine arts and the other areas cafeteria and bathrooms and such.
Yeah, so go a few slides. So what does that all kind of combine together realize? You know, we, like we started with our funds available of $12 million 196,000. We have LG Evans site work contract minus out those value engineering items that we had talked about with them. We also wanted to ensure that we kept in the single use toilet rooms as they seemed as their important aspect. These are adjacent to the auditorium across from the auditorium. So we identified those as another key aspect of what would be rebid along with the steam gym addition. And then the potential gym addition bid value minus out all those value engineering opportunities that we had talked about would leave us $2,233,000 roughly to proceed with such as Gary was talking about. Knowing the value as you identify what your next priority would be within the project. So this is a culmination of what the rest of the project is. Outside of the site work and field parking lot, the steam space, the gym addition. This is basically everything that was remaining within the design of the project. So what we did is we wanted to make sure we had it in buckets. So you had the auditorium renovations and we identified the five major key components and renovations within the auditorium. Those being the back of house and scene shop construction, the aisle lighting for the audience. The catwalk rigging, the auditorium lighting, the sound. The instrumental music renovations, which is, you know, one of the rooms being renovated. And then the vocal music renovations, another room being renovated. So we also did that for the cafeteria lobby renovations. And as well as the miscellaneous improvements that were additional components within the project that were bid. And the purpose of this is to utilize when, if you do proceed with the bidding of the gym addition and the steam. Is to utilize these buckets or these, you know, key components and renovation areas to maximize that additional 2.2 million. So if you wanted to, let's say the 2.2 million was, it was important for you to now proceed with the instrumental music room, the vocal music room, the cafeteria construction and the auditorium lobby improvements. You, those are easily identified within the documents and can be proceeded with based upon how we've reviewed the breakdown of the construction work within that space.
Or certainly another option is to hit the pause button and don't do anything right now. When the voters approve your original referendum, that has a life of 10 years. So that you have 10 years from the vote date to decide what to do with the fund balance. We're not at all suggesting one way or the other, but we're just saying these are options that you have to consider.
So you would say Gary, that pausing on these three items before?
Yes, yes.
And you know, one of the things that we've all recognized is that these are hard decisions. People put years of planning and spending time going over drawings, participating in meetings and had given a lot of input into these different areas. Everybody, including myself, wants all of these things in the project. When this project was put together, we weren't paying four and a half dollars for a gallon of gas. Unfortunately, our economy is now making it so that our entire project that we originally planned, we can't afford as is. So we do have to make some very difficult decisions in these three areas. And in my opinion, I would recommend that we do move forward with awarding the LG Evans site contract. And then work on repackaging all the value engineering ideas that we had in the gymnasium and steam area. Get that bid and then really look at what is that number and what can we do in this project? And remember, we will have further debt falling off of our books in 2026. It seems like that's a long ways away. We started this in 1819, it doesn't seem like it was that long ago. So there would be opportunities to look at different components of this project and maybe have it in a future project. Or as I said, pick components that we want out of each area that are important to us.
So you've essentially eliminated anything in the auditorium. But those are the prices that we wanted to pick and choose and we've got 2.2 million to play with.
Yes.
If we wanted to do that. If we wanted to do the gym and if we do anything here, will have to be rebid, right?
Correct.
And so we'll see how that goes.
Correct, correct. It's kind of almost like an alert card.
We're showing contractor bid numbers right now, we're utilizing that with them. So we're not talking about estimated numbers because we don't, we're your confidence is that these are numbers that we've extrapolated directly from contractors that bid your work and your projects and failed to give us their details. We put these together off of that and understood where they came from with the current market.
And I will say, you know, these are those base bid values that Mark just talked about. If you picked, if you went and you picked and chose which specific scopes of work you wanted to proceed with. We would do the same process of the value engineering. We would look at it such as the railings that I talked about, right? If you wanted to proceed with the back of house scene shop, which includes those stair towers and that additional construction, or the additional space above that. We would look at those as one of those value engineering items to utilize powder coated or painted railings in lieu of the stainless steel that is currently within the design. So we would go back and we would start value engineering these spaces out as well to try and reduce down those costs.
So you didn't do value engineering in any of this?
Not in a specific, such as we did on the gym.
Yeah, but we would in the future, we would. This is all a dynamic conversation.
And we are, we continue to do this entire project to be able to find anything that's going on with it. Our first look at this project was the STEM and STEAM, or STEAM and gym area. Because it was driving year eight, it was driving for that project and it was a critical part of the project. We know to do the demolition of the existing gymnasium space has to be done in a summer. So that is something that is, it's one of the reasons why we're talking about the schedule for that space. To demolish that portion of the building while it's fully occupied with students. Anything can be done, it's going to be very difficult to have an educational process going on when you have an excavator ripping apart a building.
No. The other piece of this.
And that's my answer also, it's something that if we want to do the demolition, we want to keep up, we want to keep the critical path to schedule. The gym and steam spaces would be the decision so we can push that forward. And this can all fall within, any of this footwork can fall within the duration of us building out that gym and steam space. So we're all, the project still could have final cost reporting at the same times always anticipated. So that's something that dollars are driving some of that schedule behind.
So you're thinking like the gym and steam, rebidding it, assuming we're successful and start doing it this summer, right?
So we have a proposed schedule that we can review with you this evening and it does explain that to you. But everything we're talking about tonight would still be done within the original schedule.
Okay, okay.
Go on, anything else?
I have a question. As far as the auditorium and the fine arts piece, do we have information somewhere from the user groups as far as their priorities? Because when we're looking, if we're doing the field and we're doing the gym and the steam. I'm worried about this piece and not doing any of that. Like is, are we planning to look at that piece and maybe look at it on a priority basis?
Yes, so the difficulty, a couple of different things. The difficulty with the priorities of the auditorium is it depends on who you talk to. Because right now, our auditorium is a wonderful concert hall. And neither Ms. Howard or Mr. Salina would recommend any changes for our concerts. And we can't expand the stage, the size of the stage, which is what they would have originally liked because we'd have to remove walls. So that's difficult because it depends on who your user group is. If you talk to Bettina, you know, she had the other items that she would say are priorities for the drama productions. The other thing I want you to remember is that the, it's, I know it seems like we had three buckets of, we did. We absolutely had three buckets of user groups. We had athletics, we had steam and we had fine arts. A major driving force behind that turf field is that our physical education program needs better spaces for instruction. That turf field will be used almost all year round. So that's, that's an instructional space. Absolutely, we'll be playing athletic events and will our athletes benefit from that 100%. But all of our students, including our fine arts students, will be benefiting from that as well as the steam space. You know, that steam space is an instructional component that will now allow us to really build and develop our steam programs. That's been a goal for many years for this district. So, and I don't want you to think that we wouldn't do anything for fine arts. We wouldn't do anything for fine arts this, you know, within these two facets.
Before you say that, okay, I know what you're going to say, but I think you've done a good job on the value engineering so far. I would still like to see some review and analysis similar to what you just done on the auditorium area. I think we owe the community some, some response in terms of what we can do. And I have no idea what, what options there are. I'm just simply saying, I think what you've done in the other areas, I think should be applied to that area. And from there, then we can get to what can we do, can't do.
And the concern with waiting to do, waiting to do anything while we do value engineering on these three components that could potentially.
Not necessarily saying we back off on that.
Okay.
Okay, I just.
And that is the plan.
Let's get focused on what we can do for the arts.
Yep, absolutely.
And that has been a conversation, we've talked a lot about the arts.
But I'd like to see the same kind of analysis that you just did, which I think is excellent.
100%, I think when Gary gets into the schedule side of this also, you're just seeing that we picked up. We were showing time that we're actually going to have to have value engineering for all three of these components. Along with the user group conversation, they'll have to be brought into those to make sure that we understand what their priorities are within this. So then we're also looking to do additional value engineering throughout that.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Sorry, optimistically, we still think if you give us the opportunity to VE the odd, we can still do everything still within, it won't be all of this. It's going to be something, but we could still do it within the original schedule. The next slide is going to get into the schedule and show you that. Those numbers there, those are the low bid numbers that you're showing us?
They weren't even low bid, they were actually the second bidding contractor.
Okay.
That we de-sculped, they provided us the best breakdown, so we wanted to utilize the best information that we had. So it's not the low bidding contractor.
So the low bid was Steve General.
Just, just under $8 million, $7,931.
So the low bid was Steve General, these numbers came from Javen who was second. They gave us, they gave us a detail of everything that they. I'm talking about the numbers specifically on the auditorium. Those are the low bid numbers. Okay. From, from Javen.
Okay.
From the second.
From the second low. From the second low.
After a little bit.
I think five. Would you say from the lowest responsible bidder? Yes. Okay.
We would.
Okay, is it in another life? Well, you know, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, give me one second. In a perfect world, we throw out the low and the high and take the middle. That's what they do in Europe, it makes sense. You know, it's like, it's like the space shuttle, you're like, sitting in the space shuttle, they're going, yeah, great. Yeah, a little bit, build this, here we go.
Military says a lot.
If with these bids, you said we have 10 years to get.
From the time the voters voted, yes.
Is it reasonable to think that if we waited a year on some of this, that we could get more? get more done for our money? Things, things come, you know, we're, we're not going back to where we were.
What's your crystal ball say?
Yeah, I know that's, that's.
I'm not, I'm not willing to stick my neck out there and say that. I just can't.
But you gotta believe everything's just way overdone right now, and.
We're in a crazy world right now.
Yeah.
I don't know if the steel number that's gonna come down that's within the auditorium would come down with a year. And that's one of our biggest numbers that's within that auditorium space, that catwalk system, and opening up a lot of that facility. I don't, I, I wouldn't recommend waiting a year for that one, because I don't think that number's gonna come down for a while.
It's not great up there, and I don't see it getting better. And it all depends on what's gonna happen in Europe and all that. And there's so many things that we can't control.
What goes up must come down.
What's that?
What goes up must come down.
We hope, to some degree, right?
Yeah.
For some things, yeah.
So what, are you saying maybe, okay, we accept the site work bid, good on that. We rebid the gym and, and steam as soon as we can, assuming we get a good bid back. And then, you know, then work on this too. I mean, then, so that we could bid on whatever we want on the auditorium a few months from now, six months from now?
And that's what this speaks to right here.
We got 2.2 million to spend?
Yes.
This, this chart is in section four, page one, so you can see, it's a little tough to read up there, so you can just have it.
So, so if we could go ahead with the steam and gym addition renovations, we would anticipate starting right now to prep that for a bid, so that we would put that on the street March 18th.
Okay.
With an anticipated bid date of April 12th and awarding contracts 18th, with constructions starting 7/1. Something we haven't got into is how to save money by breaking the, what were five contracts into more contracts. One of the things we would like to consider doing, with your permission, is we would take, we would like to break, pull out, and we've had this conversation with the GC, this man, we'll, pull out the demo and abatement and do that as a prime, and do that this summer. Part of the problem we're against is inciting contractors is, don't make sense of it. Don't forget, we bid work last year that finishes this year. So we have last summer and this summer. So our forces are working on work we did last year, plus new work we just won. Stay out of the summer as much as possible, stay out of the summer if you can, because then we're, A, interested in bidding, and B, it's gonna be more competitive. So what we'd like to do is structure this so that we prime bid the demo of the gym and prep it, and the GC and the electrical, which are the really pressured trades right now, don't really have to be here until September. There's onesie twosies. Say, the electrician has to come in and disconnect the conduit and shut off the electric, but they don't have to do it, they can throw a guy in here for a week and do that, and be done. Not really put a demand on them until September, when work is, last year's work now is done for this summer, and they're looking for new work, and they got people, and they can work through the winter. It's really appealing, and I've gotten really good feedback from contractors on that.
So can we still use the small gym for classes after the school year started after the demo was done? No.
Yeah, the large gym only.
Okay.
Yeah, because we'd be, there would be a hole out there when we're done by August.
Okay.
Sorry.
Pass to her, appropriate administrators.
And, and that has been, you know, when we've talked about scheduling this with our administrators, we have been talking about those instructional spaces. So that doesn't change anything that, moving forward. That has been what we've expected. We, what we expected from the beginning that we'd be utilizing the large gym for our K-12 physical, physical education.
Okay, cool.
You potentially could have a new turf field here to be using for gym class also.
So, yeah, go back to what Cindy said. So what we have found over the years, that schools, when they put it, never had turf field, they're using those turf fields literally 12 months out of the year. And, you know, what they thought they were gonna get 15 years out of that field, they get 11, 12. Why? It's, it's a good problem to have, but the issue is that they're using it. So marching bands can use it in the winter. You can have PE classes out there in the winter when you couldn't go outside before. In the fall, and I call this the four weeks of mud, we're going into the four weeks of mud now this, in the spring, you can go out and use turf field.
Right.
Instead of going out and, out in the, in the grass, right? So, and that's same, we face the same thing, four weeks of mud in the, in the fall. So you've got a turf field. It's gonna be a magnet, and the PE teachers are gonna love it. They really will. They'll see it as an opportunity, as another teaching space.
Oh, yeah, yeah. You know, the extra building aid you're talking about, Ken isn't here, it was, does that increase the percentage of our building aid, or is that an additional amount of money we would get? How does that extra aid work? And how much is it?
So, yeah, right now, the only thing that is generating building aid is renovation. Any addition outside of your current footprint is not driving any state aid. So for us to go outside of our footprint and build something and, and not have it completely paid for by our local tax dollars, we had to have other aid units that would drive that. Having that steam space there would help drive that. Now, there is a portion of that gym that is not gonna drive any aid, and that, that has been built into the cost.
Right. That's been built into your borrowing schedule and, and your debt borrowing and, and, and your tax stipulations.
So there must be a number somewhere.
Yes.
What that steam space is gonna get us.
I believe it was a one-time.
For aid.
1.5 million aid.
It's X dollars.
Yeah, there was 1.5 million dollars worth of aid that was getting out of that space.
Okay.
It is 1.5.
And we, and we couldn't exceed 3.1 million dollars within that addition space, because that's what was driving your tax impact to the, to your local taxpayers.
I was looking for a number.
All those numbers, we, so we've been meeting with fiscal advisors through all these meetings also, to make sure when we're having some of these changes in scope, we're still within all those parameters on your taxpayers.
Good, good. Okay.
I know Ken's really been driving a lot of that, and it happened, those people that are in weeks, they, so it's been working out.
Yeah, they're good at it.
But Cindy and Ken and Fisco have been stressing that it's a one-time offer by the state.
What's the expiration date on that? Do we have an expiration date?
It doesn't have an expiration date, but, you know, I wanna take us back in 2010, when we had first proposed that really large building project, I think it was like 30, 29, 39 million. Included in that project was a very large competition gym. At that time, it was going to drive building aid. It, it went down, we didn't repackage it, we lost the opportunity to build a new gym. I do have a concern if we didn't take advantage of these one-time building aids and we waited, that in the future, we would not have another opportunity to expand our footprint and, and add that additional gym space.
And I think that's one reason why we looked at the steam addition, gym addition so much so early on in this project, because if you don't proceed with that now, you would never build a gym again on top of that gym. You could always build the steam addition and get your aid for that outside of the footprint, but you would lose that opportunity for the gym. So it's been one reason, and one reason why the district administration has pushed so hard to make sure we maintain that gym space, because we're getting that close to $8 to come with it. On the three other buckets between the auditorium and cafeteria and miscellaneous work, that is all something that could happen after, if you found out with funds, a different project, you can always go back in the building and do lift scopes of work. You would never get the gymnasium opportunity again on the second floor above the steam.
Like, that renovation work is always gonna generate.
So it's one reason why I'm so focused on, really on this process.
Okay. Hey, guys.
So they answered your question?
No, I think you did.
But did, so that auditorium, other project scopes that we've already, we have looked ahead and said, okay, the next step would be go to the auditorium and look at VE, and aggressively look at opportunities there, just as we've done with the gym and the steam and the site, recognizing that for the, for the immediate four weeks, focus on getting the gym bid and awarded. And then soon as that happens, then shift to the auditorium and do, repeat this exercise again.
All right, all right.
So that we could put it back out in August, and then award contracts in September with work starting in October, and still get done within the original timeline.
Okay. Yeah, I would, I'm just talking for myself. I, I would hate to do nothing with the auditorium.
And we understand, and we, and we, we understand that.
And I thought collectively that group had come up with their priorities, and that's what I thought we were pursuing as part of the contract. Not that it was, you know, different groups within that group. I thought that group had collectively decided on the priorities, and that's what is part of the whole capital project.
They did. I oversimplified that, you know, really, but it is, they did have different wants and needs. And I mean, and that, that isn't to say that, that Lindsay and Joe don't support drama. I mean, all those storage areas that was gonna access their room into that lower area of the stage gym, they were all very much in favor of that. That was gonna help them with, with their instrumental concerts and, and vocal. But is it something that, that really prevented them from today providing an amazing concert? No. It really impacts more of the drama. But they did, so they did collectively come up with priorities, but it's hard to say which is more of a priority.
So Gary, I would give you a hint of a slide, you have button, next, three, four bullets, the next steps to make your roll.
Sorry. So it's kinda what we've, I just, what I just mentioned is that next steps would be to request the board to award the site contract to the LG Evans, maintain the turf field completion schedule, as I said, by September 1. So you have that for fall sports. Execute the deduct changes after the initial contract's been awarded. Moving on to value engineering selection for steam, and we presented ideas tonight, and we would be looking for direction from the board on those items, and not necessarily tonight, giving an opportunity to adjust it, talk about it, debate it, and then we can reconvene, and then rebid the project for the steam and gym addition, as you saw in the previous slide, and allow for the project team to make modifications for the selected value engineering proposals so that, so once we understand what's, what's, what's okay with the board, then the design team, SCI, Marathon, have to go back and tweak the documents, and then we put it right back out. And then, as we mentioned earlier, we would continue our evaluation and, and ask to come back to you and with value engineering items, and have a plan as to how to appropriately bid that work later this summer. And questions? I know it's a lot, I'm sorry, we threw a lot at you guys tonight.
No, it's been good. So, so what's your number, what's your guestimate for the gym and the steam? It was on one of the slides.
I have to go back.
8.4.
I had, I had down 8.4.
7.7, including all the, all the value.
What was the difference between the 8 point, there was one that said 8.4, now I'm seeing 7.7?
8.4 was the, you're.
What was the?
So there was 7.
For the value deduct. So 8.417 less 668.
Oh, okay.
Gives you 7749.
Correct. Got it, okay.
That's that number, 8417, the 668.
Yeah.
Land you at that 7749.
Okay.
I got it.
Okay, all right.
Good work.
Yeah, no, this is, this is good.
This is helpful.
Thank you. At your disposal, you want to answer anything?
We need some answers on the auditorium.
Yeah.
That piece.
Yeah.
I agree.
Agree.
Thank you.
How quickly can you turn that around?
The steam?
No, the auditorium.
The value stuff on the auditorium.
And I know, I, I know we all have a schedule here. We have some decisions we gotta make relatively quickly. And so it's a serious question. How quickly can you turn that around?
Six, eight weeks.
Maybe you need to work, work together before you answer that question.
Yeah, I would say let, let us adjust that question and also, we'll have an answer back tomorrow, because we have to evaluate, just look at the overall scope.
Yeah.
And then how to dive into it, because again, it's gonna be extrapolating all of the information from the contractors that we're going through each one of these sections where we, it's taken us a month to get through the addition and all of that to get to where we are today. I don't think it's going to be to the same magnitude, but there's opportunities for it. Because now, the auditorium has more subcontractors that are specifically built for those spaces. We're gonna be going, talking about the acoustical and the AV systems that are throughout there, talking to that engineering that we haven't, we haven't even approached that engineer yet with SCI, and that's gonna be somebody else that comes to the table. How can we simplify your system that you've put in there that's still gonna work to the magnitude that the district wants the system to work? There's, there's still some work.
I'm gonna say six, eight weeks though, six, eight weeks. But let us talk, and let us, let us figure out. Because like Mark says, there's a lot of other people that haven't even, we haven't even brought it to the fold yet.
Maybe you can do it much faster.
You mean much faster?
I think, I think we need to do some internal work as well. That needs analysis, needs to be tightened up.
I don't only say that because we gotta, if we're gonna go forward and bid it, that's gonna take a lot of time too.
From a project management standpoint, if we don't have that, everything we do is gonna be kind of fruitless.
Okay.
Until we can tell you what we want.
And it's one reason why we built three months into this conversation going through it. There's gonna, and we will physically know the dollar value with that bid, without the timeframe for that.
Right. But hearing you, I understand that you need the information from us to be able to make other decisions.
Yeah, we gotta work together.
And have that conversation with people.
Right.
Yeah.
Can you put back up the slide that is the timeline for?
That one?
Yes.
It's in here.